You ready?
Okay.
All right, it's one o'clock. We will call the February meeting of the Child and Youth Services Committee to order. For those that need to officially round the table, there's a sign up sheet, there's an agenda. So for all the regulars that are here, Brad, I don't know what more you all can give us, so we got enough stuff, but the report that you usually give, I'd like to see that, just so I can see it for this month.
Yeah, we can send you something.
Yeah. Yep, we got the JDI report, and so if you could send that, we appreciate it. With that, we'll go around the table.
Mark Craft, Douglas County Board.
Sean Keane, Fairmont Urban Assessment Center.
Mark is for Douglas County.
Brad Allen, Davis County.
Greg Kepner, Douglas County.
Paul Vibe, NDS, and Courtney Davis, Douglas County.
Ken Murphy, County Administration.
David Lumpy, Architect with HTR.
Virgudin, County Board.
Jill Lorenz, County Finance.
Jim Kavanaugh, County Board.
PJ Morgan, County Board.
Chris Rogers, County Board.
People at the sides, you can, you're not required, if you want to. Okay. That, David is presenting in place of Bruce, so I'm turning over to you for the presentation.
Thank you all for coming out today, and appreciate the invitation to have this opportunity to present to you the relative current design ideas for the Justice Center. To open up the visual progress, or in the initial stages. But we have had a chance to meet with many individuals, many folks that would be using the facility, including family members, of youth that are in the facility, and all these judges, attorneys, and all of these folks. And so we have spent a good amount of time on this, and I would just like to take you through an overview of the process and the project, where it is today. So whenever we start a project, we like to clearly have clear goals, the vision of the project, and set them out, so that we all have an understanding of where we're going, and always we have the goal that we can provide to the process. And so the first big goal and the guiding principle, Douglas County just has spaces for the juvenile courts, and I think that's been published quite a bit, especially in the past few weeks. They're out of space. We have one judge right now in a room about fifth or sixth the size of the room that we're in, so it's rather small configuration already for another space to be renovated. And the need is growing, there's probably an additional judge coming, so that's established, it's kind of a basic need. The second guiding principle, to improve the juvenile justice system with a transformative design to serve the children and the families. So a center that's rehabilitative, that's trauma-informed, that's inspiring and hopeful, really good to the kids and really good to their families, and ultimately really good to the entire community. And also, as part of the court system and the justice system, it ought to be a facility that have a problem. These are not just somebody's kids, these are our kids. This is our system, and it ought to be a civic building, kind of place that says we have pride in the system, and that we're going to throw our best foot forward for the project. So with that, just kind of an overview of the components that are in the project, and we've got some illustrations to go with. The Justice Center, right now, is an eight-story facility, and it has community programs, it has support, it has public defenders offices, county attorney offices, and six finished courtrooms to start out. And then it also has a room that has two additional courtrooms that can be finished out as the need arises. The MUD building, so the site we're going to be talking about on the next slide on this screen, is an existing building, it's four stories plus a basement, and it's approximately 36,000 square feet. And the idea is that there is a portion of the program that can fit in that building that are in nicely, and that probation is what we're looking at right now, and also some community programs on the name of it. The youth center, the current thought is a four-story facility on the site next to the eight-story tower in the MUD building, about 60,000 square feet, and with 48 finished beds plus shell space for an additional 16 beds, for a total of 64 beds. And then a skywalk connecting this entire complex to the complex that we are in now, we connect to the actual courthouse building, we can kind of show that. So the illustration on the screen shows the site, how the components that we just sort of ran through are laid out. So orientation north is up, we have Harney Street here, Howard Street here, Seventeenth and Eighteenth, and then we have the MUD building is located here. The rest of this site, we have their entry plaza and parking, surface parking, and a two-story parking garage in this location. This is the Hall of Justice. So that's kind of how everything sits where in the rest of the world, where this facility over here is at. So the proposal is to have the MUD building, it's a fine building, it's a nice older building, to have it stay as it is and be renovated and used for probation, and then have a courtyard between that and the eight-story Justice Center. So this would be the facility that has the courtrooms, the attorneys, and the, some of the community spaces as well, community spaces in the MUD building. And then down to the south, the youth center. Now, the youth center was, we're set this on a four-story building, so the youth rooms where they would be living, their living spaces are on the side of the third floor. The first floor is intake and administration. And then the fourth floor, the top level, is a gymnasium space and an outdoor space that's open to the sky, where the youth can get air and direct sunlight. So all of that again is kind of a circle. So this is a, this is a section through the tower and through the youth center, and it kind of shows how everything stacks up. And so we do have a grade change from Harney Street to Howard Street of approximately one level, so on the lower level, the bottom level of the tower, it would be parking and support spaces. And then the main lobby comes off that courtyard, that's between this facility and MUD, and that would be the community spaces and the lobby spaces. Above that, we'd have two floors that have the courtrooms, each floor would have four courts, and again, six of those would be finished initially with the two remaining courtrooms shelved out, so it's kind of an empty space, a placehold for future courts. And above that, we have four stories where we would have the county attorney and the public defenders and court administration, in more of an office-type configuration. And then the roof on top of that would hold the technical. So adjacent to that is a south, a section that went through the youth center, the first level is lobby and intake, two levels of housing, that's where the kids stay, and the gymnasium and outdoor space on the top level there. And here you can see the skywalk that would connect this entire complex over to the Hall of Justice, and there's areas in that room that we're kind of sliding through and I see without too much disruption. So we have a series of images that kind of illustrate some of the thoughts that we're going through. And so on the right-hand side, we have the existing MUD building, the left-hand side, we have the new eight-story tower, and then the youth center would be located in this area, and you can see it back beyond, they're proposing maybe a cover walkway between here and the courtyard in the center.
So you're looking to the south?
Looking to the south from the north, yeah. And so, so the notion is that if MUD building stands as it is, gets renovation, this building then responds very nicely to the current Hall of Justice, it has some of its two wings, and that's why the courtyard space responds to that. And it's a, it's a place, it's transitional space before you get into any of the facilities, that's a quiet, contemplative space, a lot of trees, grass, and that sort of thing. We also have been looking at the idea of, you know, what's the appropriate way to respond to a youth center and to a youth justice facility. And one of the notions that we're exploring currently is the use of color, and how that is brought into the facility. We certainly want the architecture to be able to respond to not only the seriousness of what's going on, but we also want to make sure that it's not intimidating or negative, we want it to be open and responsive to a trauma-informed, rehabilitative facility, and we think that the physical environment can be part of that solution, that it can help inspire, that it can help give hope. So this is a, this is a view, taking a look a little bit from the last, kind of in back perspective, a little bit better view of the tower proper, and the skywalk that would connect over to the Hall of Justice, and then the courtyard, and then MUD on the right-hand This is a perspective taken, looking to the west from the east, kind of the opposite view, so we have the tower here, skywalk, and this diagram illustrates something that we think is absolutely essential to this project, and that is, for all the research we've done, for all the experts that have known and given, and for folks that are around the, around the country, the connection, everything all in one location. So the youth center would be immediately adjacent to the Justice Center, so that there's no lack of time for youth getting the services that they need. So this connection, this red arrow shows that the youth center would be physically connected to the Justice Center, and you can go from inside of one building to the inside of the other building without any need to ever actually leave the facilities. This is just a representative floor plan. We have taken enough of a look, it's certainly not finished, we are early on in the planning process, but we also don't want to misspeak and say that, yeah, we'll make it work, we want to actually test it. So it may look a bit complete, but it's still something to just make sure that all the parts and pieces from each of the facilities actually does, and does work. And so the youth center, this would be one of the residential floors, and you can see we have the youth group and the groupies of eight in each of their facilities. And from the court floors in the tower, you can see we have four courtrooms in this location, with all the public lobby spaces and amenities on this side, and judges' chambers on the eastern side. And the MUD building, we've also taken a quick pass at making sure that the folks in probation can fit nicely into that facility, and we aren't going to be caught up down the road without it fitting. So we have a couple images for the interior use space. And so we think that, you know, there are some things that are just really fundamental to making sure that the youth have a successful physical environment to be in. One of those key things is something that is youth-friendly and kind of paramount to that is the natural daylight. So we want to bring in, in all types and forms, natural daylight into the space, we want the space to have a little bit of an informality to it, we want to introduce a color scheme and materials that are a bit softer. And so the notion of having the doors on the kids' individual rooms, being a wood door, is kind of having, you know, visible glass that's into the inside of the rooms, the furniture, is a more relaxed sort of furniture. And then you can see over in this portion where the, each, each group would have access to a dayroom that has lighting there, exterior directly once you go into that room. And then at the end of the room, we have windows in each of the living quarters that also look directly to the exterior, you can see trees and light, buildings and those sorts of things. And then when we look at the individual rooms where the kids would be, this is their sleeping quarters, it's really more like a dorm room, and so we want to make sure again that the materials, we're looking at systems that are still safe, they're still secure, they provide everything that the kids need and everything the family needs, but they're a bit softer than, say, concrete block. So it's a smooth wall, like, you know, we have a sheet rock wall here, and many of us have in our homes, and that sort of material, in terms of its aesthetic, but still safe, still secure, still very durable, we maintain. Along with that, we have a small half-wall here, and each of these rooms has a toilet facility in it, and so to provide dignity for each of the youth, they have a small screen wall, and that facility is behind there, and then also in each room we have windows that are actually much larger than our, the basic windows required by code. Code would require only three square feet per child, we're proposing something much, much larger that has views, has daylight in, and connections to the exterior. The rooftop space, so we've been, we've been studying this, and we've been looking at other facilities around the country, and interviewing other folks as to what works and what might not work so well. And what we found is that a, a exterior facility that's, again, safe and secure, that provides a vertical enclosure, but is open to the sky, actually works very well. So there's all the daylight, sunlight, open air, and we can actually take the rooftop and plant it with, with actual plants, and so that is accessible to the kids, just one or two floors up from their living area. And that is kind of a brief overview of the current design.
Questions?
Do you have hard copy of this that we could have?
I do not.
Can you send us one?
I will see what the process is to send that in, and we can send in...
Right, this is public hearing, so the records have to reflect the evidence.
Right, and we talk ahead of time all of a sudden the presentation.
This is substantially, it appears to be some of what you showed to the Building Commission on the 24th, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. First time we've seen it, but I don't know if that floor plan that you showed us was the floor plan that you showed us before that was designed for the property across Eighteenth Street?
Not exactly. There are similar characteristics of each. There are some modifications based on the, the specific sites. The sites are very similar, but they're not exactly the same.
Okay, what are some of the differences?
Well, I think one of the, the major differences is on this site, there, there's no parking garage. And so without the parking garage, there's more space on the site, and I think the other, one of the other primary differences is the orientation of the existing building. So on the site to the west, the library was oriented, it's long axis going east and west, and short north and south, and that's where it had the parking garage just to the south side of the original library. Here, the MUD building is a little bit different in dimension and proportion. What all of that does is it allows the access to this site to be a bit different. We can have a courtyard between the MUD building, the youth center, and the tower now, we have the space to do that. The way that the facility is served from, where it's at, and those types of things changed as well on this site because of the differences in, even though it's just a block apart.
What's the square footage of this facility?
The youth center is approximately 60,000 square feet.
The Juvenile Justice Center.
Can everyone here okay? Maybe, okay.
The tower?
Yes.
About 134,500 square feet currently. So we reduced that from the previous scheme, because now we have the MUD building where we can locate some of the folks, and that's approximately 36,000 square feet. So we essentially took two floors off of the tower, and we put those folks just across the courtyard.
The plan does not encompass any use of the OJ building or the IT building, is that correct?
It does not.
So it doesn't require the use of any other properties other than the MUD block, is that right?
Correct.
The skywalk, you don't show it actually piercing the facade of the courthouse, but you designed this to pierce this facade of a historically protected building.
Right, right. And that's something that we are very much aware of, we have to be very careful how that happens. We have thought, we haven't gone into a complete amount of detail on how that might happen. That facade might be able, that transition might be able to stop just short of it a bit, and then we could have just a little connector behind it that would go into one of the existing window spaces. We do have to work with the four folks to make sure that any connections that are being done away there is appropriate to that facility.
And the cost of these facilities?
The, the total project cost is, is still in the same neighborhood as it was before. There's a bit more cost with the site acquisition, but a bit less cost as we renovate the MUD building. So total project cost is still 120 million.
If you could break that out, the cost of the Juvenile Justice Center, the eight-story facility?
I did not bring that with me.
You can't give us the cost of these facilities?
No, I gave you the cost of the facilities combined.
Of the campus, but the cost of the individual...
Right, I just don't have the detail of it. Yeah.
You don't know, you don't know the cost of these facilities?
I would need to look at my notes, I'd like to.
The detention center is approximately 30 to 25, and I think 90 to 95 would be the tower.
Yeah, in that neighborhood, but I didn't want to give enough without it.
And so the detention center is how much?
Approximately 25, 30.
25 to 30 million, is what Chris said. Correct me, Chris, if I say it wrong.
And then the MUD building?
90 to 95.
That MUD combined with...
Oh, no, don't think a tower, yeah.
I'm sorry.
90 to 95, MUD and a tower.
The tower costs, you see all here, 90 to 95 million for the tower.
Right. And the detention is 25 to 30 million, but the MUD building is what? The MUD building is...
MUD building and the tower.
And relative to the finance for this project, are you able to address that?
In what way?
Well, how would it be financed?
Well, the, the plan still is that there would be a bond.
What kind of a bond?
Public, the building commission would issue a bond right now.
A revenue bond.
You're talking about $120 million, public building commission revenue bond?
I'm not, but that's what everyone's been talking about. Yeah, everyone.
That's what you're talking about.
Right.
I'm not the only one.
Yeah, those, those details of the project have not changed.
But the context today is on the design, I mean, some of those questions for the money will come later.
And since all of that information has been discussed multiple times, that's why I didn't bring all the backup.
Well, actually, this is the first time that you've presented this document to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, so it hasn't been publicly discussed with us at all.
Yes.
But relative to the floor plan that you showed us, that's one floor. Are there floor plans for all of the floors, or is that the only floor plan that you have, is one floor?
No, we've worked through each of the floors in that same level of detail, that's a representative floor.
Okay, can you share those floor plans with us?
I cannot.
You cannot?
No, I didn't bring, this is the presentation we put together as an overview of the project.
And is there some reason you can't share the floor plans with us?
It's not, it was what he was asked to bring, and note the question I asked him to bring, the design he would have showed at any point to give an update on what it is, what it looks like, I didn't ask him to go detail for a floor, but also, the reason why it hadn't come to the board is simply a timing matter. When the building commission was there, it was asked, and they brought it, so that the timing to get it for the board, it got here as soon as we could get it, and I wanted to go through the committee to be seen, and then it'll go to the floor, so that's the, the issue with the board piece.
And I, I don't see where it matters if each floor is slightly different. You know, we don't need to know unless we're going to micromanage the exact design and that, you know, we're not going to get into discussing the color of the floors right now. What do we need to know some of these questions for? They seem repetitive and inane, because we don't need to know all of these details at this time.
You can ask all the questions you want to. He, he basically, I mean, I told him to bring the design, I did not ask him to bring floor by floor. I mean, I haven't been in a presentation that, the years I've been here, where we brought floor by floor. I mean, it's always been like this, so this is the standard presentation, but any, any questions again.
Yeah, you can ask away, that's fine. In the, in the tower, we have two floors of the courts, I showed four floors. Four floors are office, they have a typical office floors. The MUD building showed the typical office floor, the tower would be somewhere. And for the youth center, we showed the roof, which is the gymnasium, the outdoor space. And then floors two and three would be the same, all very similar, one has a clinical and educational spaces, but the, the living components and those aspects of the floors.
Anybody else?
Is this, is this facility meant to replace completely the existing Douglas County Youth Center on 42nd and 4th?
It has.
How many, how many youth will this facility house?
So the, the thought right now is that there are 48 rooms that are finished, 48 beds, with expansion for an additional 16, and those 16 are right now shelved.
Okay, for total possibility of...
That would be 64 total.
64. How many, do you know how many are in the current Douglas County Youth Center facility?
I think it varies day by day.
89 today for modest.
What is it today?
89.
89 today?
So the plan, do you downsize?
Yep, the, the, the answer to that is, so the question's been there about size. There's, there's a lot of discussion about what is the right size. The size is based on, I think, some of the report that came from the study, but also I think you can base the report also on historic numbers for the, for the last five years. I think the highest number's been 82, 83, the lowest number's been 70. You take into account that, you know, the number today, at least from the report that was presented at the last meeting, and the numbers over the years, and correct me if I'm wrong, this month, the question I think I asked at the podium this month was high, last couple of years, from looking at that, this month has ran high, but it's leveled back down. You take into account the implications of the law that could come into effect, where people that are kids that are in there now won't be able to stay, depending on the day, that could be between 15, 25 kids maybe, and a lot of it is going to be the programming piece. So there's at least two programs that are up to speed now, the programming piece will be continually worked on and evolving, and then there's another work to be come after this on, on other pieces. So the point to note too about this size is, if they, when things get approved, if they get approved, this is a three-year bid. But the process of the numbers that are there now are, that's going to have to happen in July, because this law goes into July to get the, the space down. So you have time to turn the system to get there and put some things in place. So I tried to give you a complete view of what the philosophy was to get to the number. Now, let me add my own piece in, there's people screaming for 100, 125 bids. If you take fact by itself, it's fact over the last five years, and that's what I've seen, I think it's probably a couple of years back, we haven't had 100 kids, I don't know, in eight, nine years. So it makes no sense to build 100 bids. That's the data that can be shown to you. So anybody else that tells you need 100 bids, I want them to show me the data. Anybody else?
You know, it looks like that new city floor plan is somewhat symmetrical, so could the footprint be cut in half, and four stories could be eight stories, have this footprint size?
Well, you know, there, there's, so what Mr. Perrin is talking about is the, the floor plan, let me all this flip back, and we kind of address that question. So I believe what you're asking is, can we take this floor plan and put it on top of that? And so physically, is that a possibility? Yes, is it a wise thing to do? We don't think so at all. Floor plates have a certain point at which they become inefficient, and they become very expensive, because we're, we're being very inefficient, our use of space. So in, in terms of kind of looking at that from just a floor spa, space, there's, you know, two stairs that are required off of each floor. There's always going to be two stairs that are required off each floor. We have two elevators in the facility, we're always going to have two. If you cut the floor plate in half, you take a greater percentage of each floor plate with that sort of infrastructure. And so if you do something like that, you will learn to drive the expense up a considerable amount. The other thing that falls into the cost associated with that is the perimeter of the building. So right now, if you think of, you know, we have one, two, say, three, four, five, six sides to the exterior step, it was up, and it adds to interior, and now we come to exterior sides. And so now, instead of six areas on the exterior, you have eight, and so that sort of thing really drives the inefficiency. But then there's another component to this, which really drives the decision to make the building this configuration. In all of our research, in all of our study, in all of our expertise in the projects that we've done all over the world, we know that there's some vertical movement that's perfectly fine. It's done in the current facility, the youth building in two levels. We've studied facilities all around the country, Baltimore, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and all those facilities, the, the kids are living on a couple of levels, but at some point, you know, if we get to a four-level scheme or a five-level scheme, we start to move the kids a lot more, and so we want to be mindful of that, and make sure that we are in that zone where it's still appropriate, and that certainly you could have more than two floors, but, you know, if we start to get to four, six, eight floors, at some point we could, you know, make this one room, you know, 100 stories tall, and that, that really doesn't make sense for these.
You retired and I've been terribly involved in a lot of other things, I have up here and you sit back and listen, and think, and like you ask, in what appears to be a rush to give the children an ultimate living, educational, and housing experience, and knowing as a child, I was rather a geniuses, and I watched lots of children. Are we certain they're going to be safe there, can, I mean, is there...
Yeah.
What about the safety of...
Absolutely.
Do children run and jump over the wall? I've been to certificies and really, you know...
Right.
Throw each other around, is there a high...
No, it's a, it's a fair point.
No chance of them getting the pole ball?
Right, so, so safety, security, and durability.
I was a fan of the Roadrunner Condom, is any chance of mail coming in there from the Agri Delay Company, and they could get spring-loaded shoes and whatever?
That can happen now if you want to, but it's not, it'll happen.
Those are good questions, and they're good questions. Safety, security, and durability are, are paramount. We want to make sure that the kids are safe, we want to make sure... We wanna make sure that the kids are safe. We wanna make sure that, that our community is safe. We wanna make sure.
My main point being serious is.
Yeah.
Why can't all of this be done in the existing juvenile youth center? Is this really about a land grab?
That's not his question to answer. He's doing what we asked him to do.
Well, we can do all that at the existing facility.
It's not about land grab. It's willing by, willing to sell.
I think though, if I might, Claire, if you're not aligned, um, go ahead and, and let me know. We have a deep expertise in this project, I, our firm does. And not only from ours, but all the other experts that are out there, everything, all in one location is just paramount. We'd love to make sure that it's in the best interest of the youth, their families and the community to make sure. This is a detention facility for the youth. This is not, they haven't been adjudicated. It's not incarceration. We wanna make sure they have the best chance of success, which means our culture and our society has the best chance of success. The best way to do that is to co-locate everybody so that there is not a timeline when there's a need. If a kid needs to see a judge, here, you're gonna have no son. Thank you.
Yeah. Why does that mean specifically that you need to move the detention center of the youth downtown rather than moving the services provided to the youth to Forty Second Street?
Yeah, absolutely third point. So the notion of those, the services that surround the youth are, the way our system is put together, it's, it's not only for the youth, but it's also the attorneys, uh, for the, the, the public defenders and the county attorneys. And all those folks, there's a lot of people, and private attorneys already in this neighborhood. It's very much a justice area. And so do you move all of that out of downtown? And what does that do? So that's a big part of the equation. The other really big part of the equation is when we look at serving the youth best and the families best, what's the best place to put a, a center like this? And that's got to be someplace that is very easily accessible, someplace that's on mass transit lines, someplace where it's kind of one-stop facility that can help with all the, all the components, whether it's probation, whether it's a judge, whether it's an attorney, whether it's the youth. All of that can happen right there. It's in a place that's in the city that is really easy to access.
So you need to move youth detention downtown to the city center?
Let me answer that. This, this is, this is the reason why. The, everybody's contained in this till now. You know, for years, probably the last eight, nine for sure, in this room, there's been conversations about one-stop facility. There was discussion about the one-stop facility at Forty Second, seeing if you could move and have it down there. But that's before the possibility of downtown became available. There was a time that the old Federal Reserve Building, there was, we were quietly looking to redo that and make that all in one. So when the opportunity came for land downtown, the goal was to have the one-stop here. Not for land grab because of proximity to the courthouse, which was always ideal to have everything down, downtown. But you never knew it was a possibility. So that's the reason why. It's not, cause you could put money into redoing that, but I honestly feel that would be more than building a new building. And when everything happened with the tower and the possibility of the courthouse being down here, then it was, it was a no-brainer with most of the conversations that had, that you would bring that there. Now, to add on to the question that was talked about size, size piece is a push. But the size piece is not just about size facility. The size piece is about programming. The size piece is about court process to get people through. So it's not just all about the building. It's about everybody in the system being pushed to push their piece. So that's simply what the building's about. There was never, there was an idea when we were talking about Forty Second, but when the possibility came downtown, that, that was the hope, and that's the clearest answer I can give.
But you do raise some valid questions. For instance, the attorney, uh, component, a fraction of the attorneys involved in this project would ever practice in juvenile court. So you, you know, you raise a valid point that the judicial, uh, uh, component. Courtrooms could be located at Forty Second Street, probably for a lot less cost than the new construction that's, uh, anticipated here. I think the, the big fundamental difference is this is all about essentially new construction with the small component of the M U D headquarters, which is a condition of the sale, uh, the reason that's being incorporated. But you'll notice there's no old construction. For instance, we acquired the O H A building. It's not in part of this because it would be redoing old construction. The I T building, it's not part of this for the, the same reason. And Forty Second Street, by and large, is not part of this. This is not new construction. These people are about new construction, almost exclusively this is new construction, which is massively more expensive. So you're exactly right, and it does drive the costs up significantly.
Hold on, hold on, hold on there. Let me, let me help. That's incorrect. So the point of saying, new construction is massively more expensive? How many times have you heard the example of putting it, it costs more to remodel some things than to, to build new? The example about the attorney is this, none of this has been a secret. It's all about space, and it's all about time period. At this time last year, there was possibilities that we're not only gonna get a sixth judge, we're a seventh judge. And the question was asked, let us hold off to address the facilities question. This is a, this is, this is not a secret. So the conversation of the attorneys, this is not just about the building. It's addressing the space need overall. So the fact that all the attorneys are gonna be down there, it's gonna address the space need, and it's gonna address also a need that we have for future attorney possibilities. Now, to say the O H A piece was gonna be remodeled, we just had a big fight on the floor.
Yeah.
About eminent domain and all of this because we're gonna tear down buildings. Now, how do you say in the same realm, you're gonna remodel the building? Not about that. Commissioner Claire?
Yes. And, and new construction on the Forty Second Street site is still new construction. New foundation, four new walls, uh, finding the space and the parking. Right now, people who go out there to visit their children, many times have to work, walk two blocks. There's no space in our parking lot. So, you know, it, it's a, uh, it's an illusion that we can do it cheaper on Forty Second Street. And even if we could do it cheaper, we can't do it better. And doing it better is what we're looking to do.
Now, all of this too is, there's not, this is a, a process that started ten years ago, and everybody's acting like this thing is gonna stop, stopping in with a building. The building just happens to be its time and space. And it's just like, if you had the opportunity to do the building, the conversation was more so about trying to do the best for the kids. And the best for the kids is the service. The best for the kids is trauma-informed facility, built to modern standards. And nothing against the existing facility. The existing facility is clean. It's well-run. It was a facility built in a time where you were building youth detention centers like jails and making them different for kids. This is all about a future discussion, about trying to do the best for the kids and the piece of that. And it's just one part in its time because the whole reform discussion's been happening with the state and us for the last ten years. And this is the latest cog, the latest cog in the wheel of trying to get to reform.
You know, to finally, cause I've got another engagement. It's interesting that this has been in the works for so long, and yet we don't have a complete floor plan. We don't have any budget. And the only, uh, finance program that we have is one that was turned down, uh, by a vote of the Public Building Commission. So the key components of this entire project, if they exist, aren't being shown to the public. And if it's been in the works for ten years, they should be easily available. But when we ask for basic things like, let's see a floor plan, let's see a budget, uh, you know, let's see some details, again and again and again, we don't have them available. We can't give them to you. It's a big thing even to get this thing produced in hard copy for distribution. So, you know, it's not ready for prime time. We can do this better, cheaper, and smarter. It doesn't even account for the fact that we've acquired the O H A building, uh, specifically for this project. And now it's not even discussed as to what do we do with the O H A building? Millions of dollars of public money has been spent on it, but it just isn't part of what we're gonna talk about today. So there's another way to go, and you'll hear more about that soon.
Let me, let me correct the record, cause I, I was preparing for it. My hope was just new design, but I knew it was gonna re, get relitigated. Project, the project has not been in work for ten years. The reform effort has been in effect for ten years. The project's day is now, and that discussion is now. Now, to the point of saying, numbers haven't been shown, there's just so many times you can move the bar. I mean, you're gonna wear out the grass if you keep moving the goalposts so many times. Numbers were shown. Numbers are continuing to be shown. There's nothing that can't be there. That's what this whole meeting is today, to put it on the table and put it there. So, um, with that, Mary Ann, then I saw another hand somewhere.
Well, I was gonna say again, those statements are not true. The floor plans and the budgets were shown, and you used it, Jim, to then alter your plan from the fifty million dollars to the hundred and fifty million dollars. You used the floor plan, square footage, and the budget numbers that were presented in public at our county board meeting. They were there. They were given to us. So to say that we were not, we are not giving information is just not a correct statement. We are now showing you the design of the block in which we're using, which is pretty similar to what we've already seen. We have stated over and over and over and over again that the gross maximum price is going to be no more than a hundred and twenty million dollars, end of story, period. That's what we're keeping the project price tag at. If it goes below that, great, but it's a guarantee it won't go above it. But though, to say that nothing has been given, nothing has been talked about, nothing has been shown to the public, this conversation has had more public input and discussion at a county board meeting than any issue that I have been involved with on the county board.
Okay, hold on, wait, wait, wait a minute, cause I got, wait a minute.
I know, but I got people in line now, so I gotta be a little more formal.
Uh, Mark, Claire, and then somebody from the public. Mark?
Yeah, Mary Ann, this isn't, this is about obstructionism. This is about a sore loser having a child. That's all it's about. That is all it's about. And next he's gonna want to sell us, he wanted to sell us the, uh, the, uh, aim building. Now he's probably gonna want to sell us the keyline building. You know, he's looking for something that he can claim a win for. That's all he's looking for.
So he can talk to her comments, but I cannot talk to her comments.
You're fine as long as somebody wanna speak now. Look, look. Look, this is not the county board meeting. I really don't wanna be hard for him.
I don't really wanna get overstepped by this. Ms. Craft who can talk at any time, Ms. Duda who can talk at any time, but when she addresses me.
I've been waiting five minutes.
Then I don't get to respond to the things that she addressed to me.
You just, you just went back and forth.
You just make them up as you go along as usual.
Claire, come on.
We won't talk about the elephant in the middle of the room, which is, I asked him for a floor plan. He said, couldn't give it to us.
Hey, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to be in order. I'm actually be in order because I'm trying not to be hard on that. Well, that's fine. Come on.
You can make it up as you go along.
We'll follow my lead then.
As soon as I've got the floor. The main driver on this, this is a courthouse annex. The conversation, and, and we've been looking for years, where do we wanna do it? Forty Second Street. Five years ago, Mary Ann and I would've both said, yeah, this is where we envision the future of juvenile court. As we have learned more about it, no, that is not the best location. It needs to be co-located with it. This is first and foremost a courthouse expansion. The juvenile detention center is an add-on. It is not the main driver. It is not the main focus. It is not the lion's share of the project. A courthouse annex has to be co-located with the existing courthouse for security, for efficiency. We cannot achieve that if we go out to Forty Second Street. Now, the question is, after we do the courthouse annex, which we have to do, and seven commissioners have repeatedly said, we have to do this. Then the question comes, do you bring the juvenile detention center down with it or not? But the main driver, the main focus has to be on the space for the public defender, the county attorney, the juvenile courts. Where are we putting our next district court when we get it possibly this year and have nowhere to put them? Where do we put that seventh juvenile judge? We have nowhere to put them. We have to get, expanding the courthouse now, and yes, we have been talking about it for many, many years. And I resent being told that we're trying to rush this through. It's a land grab. No, it's an overcrowded, undersized courthouse that has to have more room yesterday.
I saw somebody back here with a hand up. Larry, was that you?
I'm sorry?
You had your hand up?
I have a question.
Please.
Um, Bruce, I'm here speaking for Carol Zasek. I'm here today. Um, her questions were to you.
Tell us your name so we can hear it.
My name is Nicole LeClaire.
Yep.
Speaking for Carol Zasek, and I'm taking it that Bruce Carpenter is not here today. I was late a few minutes. So you're speaking for H G R?
Yes.
Okay. So her questions were, how many detention facilities has H G R built? What's your experience with that? And what is the plan for feeding the kids onsite there?
The second question was for feeding the kids? Okay, so I can, I can give you a complete list of our portfolio.
So you, you have experience with building detention facilities?
Apps, apps, all over the world. And currently, we, and we have folks on our team, I'm just one, that's representing to speak to you today. We have, on this specific team, we have expertise from our Dallas office, from our Los Angeles, and from our local office as well. I, I don't, again, I don't memorize the, the dozens and hundreds of facilities that we've done.
Okay.
But I can do that for you.
Okay.
In terms of, uh, feeding the youth and making sure that that's taken care of, there's a couple of models to follow. Um, one is you can do it, prepare it all within the facility. And, uh, again, it's a question of efficiency. When you have a certain number of folks having a full-service kitchen, economically makes a lot of sense. Um, and when you have fewer folks, um, it makes sense to have that, um, as an outside source that's brought in, uh, similar to how it is done today. So while it's connected right to the Douglas County, uh, hospital next door, and it comes across, you can still have it brought in on a daily basis and still have a, a, a preparation kitchen. And in case there's an emergency, you wanna make sure if there's snowstorms or ice storms or something like that, that the, the kids have everything they need for, for many days in that scenario. And so there's two ways to look at it, and currently what we're thinking is that, that the food would be brought in from the outside, from an outside vendor. It would be more cost-effective to do that rather than have a full production kitchen for that number of people.
Do you know how much that will cost?
That, we haven't gotten it. That'll happen when we get into it, that as a.
Are you thinking of the same people that do it now?
The people that do it now, the food comes from the health center that's located next door.
I just wondered if it's gonna be them again. Okay, thank you.
Sir?
Uh, how does, and do you know how does building a detention center in the urban core affect the surrounding?
Can you station me?
Uh, yes.
I can.
Resident downtown, graduate student.
Might be an uptick.
Yes, absolutely. Um, a good portion of our research that we've been doing has been focused on visiting the facilities that have been done successfully. So most recently, we went to Baltimore, which is the newest facility physically. Um, it's right downtown in the urban form. But Minneapolis and St. Paul, and up in the Ramsey Counties, are also right in their urban core. And so I think Minneapolis is probably the, the, the poster child for a successful environment. And they put in a facility, in fact, after the facility, it's been there for some time in the urban core, the new Viking Stadium, and forgive me, I'm not, it's sports versus setup in the name of the stadium, is right across the street, immediately across the street. There's a grand public plaza, um, right on the other street, you know, the Jason Street. There's new facilities and development going on, billion-plus development right around that facility happening right now. So we, we have not only all the, uh, kinda scientific evidence, but we have the empirical evidence. We have, we have the proof of the facilities that have been done, uh, that have gone before us. We're not proposing anything that's bleeding edge. We wanna make sure that what, what we're doing is tried and true in the new core.
Peter?
I was gonna answer that too because Claire and I were up in Minneapolis, not at county expense. And the thing about Minneapolis, it's about a million three population. And the condos and so on have been built after their detention center and courts and all that was built. Probably twelve years ago, I'm gonna say Claire, when they told us that, maybe a little longer. Anyway, there's been condos built there. There's fine restaurants, everything around it. They run their youth center, and I know Brad, you were there too, and I believe the numbers that they average were around sixty is the number that they run at. That's our average, even though they're twice our size. St. Paul is exactly our size, within twenty thousand population-wise. And that's right downtown, restaurants, everything around it. I mean, it's not.
So virtually, I'm.
And, and they run at about twenty to thirty is their average. Now, those aren't two, uh, exceptions because what I did is, I did visit Maricopa County, population about four million two, and did that for a day with the courts and detention altogether. They have two facilities, and they're running at under two hundred. Brad Alexander set up that I could meet with someone out there. And, um, they run it, the day I. I was there, one of their facilities was running at ninety-some, and the other one was running at around eighty-six or, in the eighties, they were total of one eighty-five, eighty-eight, right in there. They told me that, that's where they run, with their two facilities, even though they're over six times our population. I do think, in some of the comments they made, I don't wanna belabor it, but the comments they made were, you know, they're able to expedite in their community programs and some other things with the courts there is really helpful, and I saw 'em coming down the halls we all did, you know, and they're not shackled or that kinda thing in most cases. So, and I wanted to ask one other question, if that's okay. When the statement was made about the hundred and fifteen million that Commissioner Kavanaugh proposed, I kinda recall that it was around a hundred and five or a hundred and fifteen that our board was the cost of that, that we was revised. Am I accurate on that, Commissioner?
Actually, it's in components in the proposal that we presented at the Administrative Services Committee meeting. So the proposal had three phases, which we advocate doing on this. One is the youth center, one is the lawyers' facilities, and one is the courthouse. The proposal is under revision now like this, because the footprint has changed, from west of Eighteenth Street to the MUD building property. And when that's available, and it will be soon, I'll share that with you again. But suffice it to say, it's cheaper than the hundred and twenty million plus that we're talking about here, and the components are done in phases, not all at once.
But what was the cost before that you stated at the board? Because somebody said a hundred and fifteen, I thought it was a hundred and five or a hundred and...
Hundred and fifteen.
For the component, for the component parts, I think it was in the low hundreds range, below a hundred and twenty. But that's, that's about as relevant to this discussion as the proposal that they put forward that included a garage west of a hundred and Eighteenth Street. I wanna talk about what proposal we're going to go forward with, and I'll be happy to provide that with you. It's significantly lower than the amount that you're talking about, significantly lower than a hundred and twenty...
He just asked you a question about the cost, though.
I was just asking.
And I'm asking for a budget of this, gentlemen, we don't have it, even though they've been working and being paid to provide this for months and months.
I think he has it, he's telling us, and I'm...
Well, I think it was provided in other formats, and it hasn't substantially changed.
But, but I...
Today, my point was to come and share the design. I wasn't asked to reiterate months and months worth of presentations that have been made in other formats.
All I was doing was asking a simple question.
And I've been asking the same simple questions, Peter.
And my other statement would be that the cost of this project will not exceed a hundred and twenty million, and the hope is that we're gonna have some contributions to help with that fund, and I don't want the people in the room to leave here thinking that we have one way of doing it on Forty Second or something else that'll cost sixty million or eighty million, and we're spending an extra forty million.
Oh, you're spending tens of millions of dollars more, and you're not proposing to have any vote of the people on any component of this, whereas everything that would be in the alternative would be voted on by the people. Significant differences, but let's talk finance, I'm happy to talk finance, if you want to.
No, the only, well, let me, let me...
It's okay.
The question, the question was, is your, was your project cost? On record, it's a hundred and fifteen. So, I saw a hand over here.
One right there.
Yes, I'm Norman LeClaire, from Bellevue, Nebraska, and I've been coming to all of these meetings. So I would like to know, what do you estimate the cost of the remodel to be per square foot of MUD?
The remodel of MUD? There's construction costs and there's project costs, so in order to compare it to the hundred and twenty million dollars, it's about, right now, we're estimating about three hundred dollars a square foot for the remodel, but that's project cost, so that includes all the soft costs as well, it's not the hard construction costs.
Wait a minute. You don't?
How many square feet does MUD?
MUD, the top four floors are about thirty-six thousand square feet.
You don't, man?
Good things are not included in the cost, like any parking facilities or connector building, site acquisition, things are still to be, to come outside.
I, I...
The project includes the tower, the acquisition of the property, the tower, the renovation of MUD, the youth center, and walkways.
Parking garage is not a counties' project.
No.
Okay, with that, one more time.
Well, I guess I'd ask then, is the parking garage just not going to be built? Is that correct?
Parking garage, you talked to the building commissioner.
Okay, so it may be built.
Parking garage is not the county's project.
Well, that's not a yes or no, but...
How many times you want to know?
How many yes or no? Yes or no, it's gonna be built, it's not gonna be built, it's proposed, it's not proposed. Clear yes or no would suffice.
Well, yes, sir.
I think I misunderstood the commissioner, because I think Commissioner Duda just a few minutes ago said the plan is still to ask the building commission to do the bonding process, was you said that?
Yep.
Yeah, and they voted against that, right?
Yep.
Okay. And then Commissioner Morgan, I think just a minute ago, the thing that really set me off was the notion that what you said was that you had hoped that you would get other money from somewhere. So I don't understand if we're hoping that the building commission will change their minds, or if we're hoping that other money is gonna magically appear, but a hundred and twenty million is a lot of money, and doesn't that, doesn't that constitute more than a double-digit tax increase to all the taxpayers in the county?
No, the tax increase proposed right now, without donations, is less than one percent.
One percent?
Less than one percent.
For the whole hundred and twenty million dollars?
Less than one percent.
To service the bonds, a hundred and twenty million dollars would be less than one percent of tax increase in Douglas County.
No, I think you've gotta, look at, the mill levy increase will be in double digits. The mill levy increase will be substantial, it will be big.
Correct me if...
That's what they don't wanna talk about, and they'll give you different answers, but the mill levy will go up substantially.
I, I apologize, I, I think I said taxes, and if all of the money is in another form called a levy, I apologize in my own ignorance, I didn't know levy.
A levy, levy is a tax by another name. Any way it goes, this, this is the line of it. What you've heard is, let me, correct me if I'm wrong, there's this big dispute about you should go public or you should go that. The comparison is compared with the school districts that did a public bond. The school districts do not have public building commissions. Only two entities in the state have public building commissions, Douglas County and Omaha, Lancaster and Lincoln, use to build their buildings. Like this one was built, like that one was maintained. So to compare apples and oranges, I'm saying the school district does this, to even compare our own public bond that we did with the equipment is wrong, because that bond is not for an extension of these buildings. So, one, whether it's a hundred and twenty million dollars project or a hundred and fifteen million dollars project, I'm telling you, somebody's gotta pay for it. You haven't been told how the hundred and fifteen's gonna be paid for. It's gonna be paid for by a levy adjustment. We don't know exactly what that is now, but the worst-case scenario, and correct me, is less than one percent, because if assessments are higher and there's been one donation confirmed that we can talk through, so with that donation and supposedly more, the levy could be lower. So you can't give exact cost, what I'm giving you is worst-case scenario, and my understanding with worst-case scenario is less than a one percent increase to the levy, to pay the bonds or service on it.
But I'm glad we're talking about the finances, because it's important. This is a property tax increase without a vote of the people. That's the proposal. The alternative is a vote of the people, and we scale it so that it has limited impact on property taxes. This is a property tax increase without a vote of the people. That's the bottom line on this proposal.
That's fine, I know, I know you're, you're a twin, I forget which one you're, uh...
Scott.
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 Okay, Scott, I just told you how it's gonna be paid for, off the record, ask him how he's gonna pay for his.
Scott.
I know, and I just told you, so, so, yeah, so I asked you how that was gonna be paid.
I'm gonna just answer, Scott, when I said that, it was in the newspaper that Sherwood Foundation had committed ten million dollars. That was stated in the news, five million toward the building project, and then additional five million toward programs in the community, which is something we've heard in other communities. There are other people that have been talked to, and that's a hope, to get some monies from the private sector, not all the monies, and I don't wanna misconstrue, but that's what I was speaking to. So I hope I answered your question about that.
And relative to that, the Sherwood Foundation's proposed contribution to the construction of this project, five million dollars, it comes with two pages of conditions, many of which are impossible to comply with. The five million dollars for the programs is not specified anywhere in any county plan, but the Sherwood Foundation has laid out, like I said, two pages of conditions of, if you want this, what would, on a hundred and twenty million project, be less than five percent of the construction cost, you have to comply with a bunch of conditions that basically says how to run your government. That hasn't been discussed, that document hasn't been brought out, but we will have that discussion in public and soon.
So let me correct that. Sherwood's requirements were negotiated in joint by commissioners, the county attorney, and probation, people that control the flow, mostly other people that went in there. So there's nothing in that letter that hasn't been discussed over the last five to six years that's been joint-talked to specifically. There's nothing in there that Sherwood forced on the county. This is agreed-upon deal. So, just so to make sure the framing and the spin is right, you know, if I had to point, counterpoint, we'd be doing that, but that's the, that's the deal. With that...
Is that letter public?
I can get you a copy of that. That letter's been given, I think the paper, other people have that, so that's fine. Any more discussion on this item?
Commissioner Rogers, I should, that letter you're referencing, it is on the Justice Center website, I think it was presented at the, one of the last December meetings, so...
With that, we'll go on item number two, and more updates will be coming for the group. Are you gonna leave this? The next item? I'm gonna turn it over to you all. That next item is a presentation of interactive websites illustrating the cost and path of juveniles through the system. Can you get it set up?
Yeah, it's really fast here. All right, thank you so much for having us today, so we really appreciate being able to be on the agenda. My name is Juliette Summers, I'm with Voices for Children in Nebraska, we're a nonprofit on partisan child access organization, committed to ensuring that Nebraska is the best place to be.
Okay, Juliette, hold on. I know you all, if it's, if you need to step out, because this room is tight, so we're here, okay, go ahead.
And one of our areas of work is...
My name is Christine Huntington, I work at UNL, Center on Children, Families, and the Law. I direct a project there called Nebraska's Advocates, just focus on training for juvenile defense attorneys, and then also policy reform.
And we know each other, because we both started off as juvenile public defenders right here in Douglas County. So we appreciate being on the agenda on a day when there's a lot of interest in the room, but a lot of you are very clear that this project that we're gonna present on is not related to juvenile justice. It is certainly related, because it is juvenile justice, but, and some of the information we hope to present to you today will absolutely impact the, you know, the future plans of how juvenile justice should operate in our county, but we hope that, we hope that you hear us with an open mind. So, we are sharing today a project we've been working on since summer of 2017. We've been meeting as a group of lawyers who have represented kids in juvenile justice, who understand some of the data points and the systemic nature of juvenile justice, and wanted to try to lay out a case scenario for the, the true cost of how different cases might progress through our system. So that's what we're here to share with you today, is kind of a sneak peek. We're gonna do a formal release on February twenty-sixth, when it will be officially posted on the Voices for Children website. We do have a live link for that today, but just letting you know, this is kind of a soft launch sneak peek, so.
Yeah, and we have some handouts, not enough for everyone, but we can definitely share the brochure with everyone in the interactive piece as well. The other attorney we worked on it with is Joyce Suter, who I think has also presented to this group before. All three of us now in the public defender's office here in Douglas County as well, she's a, in private practice, primarily in support of...
So page one there, page one of the print-off, and of course, if you'd like that on, of the, the print-off that you'll see, is just some sort of annual statistics for Douglas County. We tried to get a specific data that was specific to the county from a variety of sources related to the number of youth who are arrested, the number of case filings in juvenile court for adequacy cases, which is where a minor committed a crime or an infraction, or status cases, which is where a minor has been charged in juvenile court for non-criminal behavior that an adult couldn't be charged with, but our, our juvenile code allows for a statutory filing against a child, like truancy from school is, is our biggest example of that. We looked, we brought you data on average, like the time from case filing to termination in juvenile cases, average like the time on probation, the average number of youth on probation, placed on probation in a given year, the percent of which were moderate to low risk, based on the evaluations that probation does. The number of youth in the year placed out of the home, whether that is in the detention facility or in another form of out-of-home placement, congregant care, or foster care, there's a handful. Number of youth discharged in a year from probation, and what percent was successful versus unsuccessful, and then the bottom line that you see is the, the total number of admissions to proximity care, and the average number of days spent in detention. So that's kind of, you know, your average, like, page of statistics that you might get. The meat of this project that we're gonna start going through with you is what you find on the inner spread, so, so...
Apologize?
Upside down.
Upside down.
Soft lunch. Very soft lunch today. Very. Just keep me updated. And the, the print-off that you have in front of you, it, we, it is a little streamlined version, the, what I've got up on the computer is the interactive PDF. So each of the dots, who am I gonna title this up, or you're way back, each of these dots, oh yeah, Christine, come point out. These lines, these are different roadmaps that represent kind of different, fairly typical ways a kid might progress in a juvenile justice case, that we have seen over and over again as lawyers who practice in juvenile court. So the first one is your sort of best-case scenario, the simple and streamlined version, where the kid gets referred to their version and is relatively successful, and it closes fairly quickly. Your second, average roadmap is the kid who ends up in the juvenile court, there might be a couple twists or turns along the way, or something doesn't get set up quite right, and the case closes after a series of months. And then the bottom roadmap is kind of your, your messy case. So as lawyers, we've all seen cases like this, where it just seems like nothing can go quite right for this child. Some, some of it's based on their choices, some of it's based on the system response, not getting things together for them, and they end up out of the home for, through years, and eventually end up, their case terminates simply because they turned nineteen. And what we did was...
And really important to point out, these three case scenarios, which are not like actual cases, but based on cases that we have represented youth in the past, and, and discussions with youth along the way, they all start out at the same point, right? They all start with a theft on lawful taking, cop processing, and that's how they come in contact with the system. But based on a variety of factors, as Juliette was saying, some is based on their own choices, some is based on, you know, case processing, issues, probation violations, they have very different paths that they, they take. And so what we wanted to do is show how each youth got to each end.
And then also how those costs stack up along the way. So we tried to be as inclusive as possible in thinking about the costs of each moment in a case progression, from, you know, obviously the contractual costs of a placement bed or a particular service that probation might be part of the probation order, but even down to... but even down to the human capital, the people's time. So every time a lawyer called their client, what's the average public defender's salary? Broken down by the hour and then by the fifteen minutes. Because, you know, that's, that's a cost that this case is taking up from the county. You know, every piece of paperwork that's filed, who's the clerk who is filing that paperwork? Who's the county attorney staff, or the Douglas County attorney staff who is doing a little bit of research or putting that filing together? Trying to bring together all those different small dollar amounts. And we have a really, really long spreadsheet that sort of tabulates all of this. Into each of these dots represents something that happens in the case and what the associated costs are based on these different breakdowns, so.
And the breakdowns are like the offense, so the original charge, violation, whether or not they got a new charge. And then the law enforcement response and the costs associated with that, costs that are associated with the court system. And then we break it down to what are we actually spending on services for the youth and family as opposed to detention costs or other administrative costs? So we can kind of see, like in this last scenario, the youth spent twenty-nine months in the system, spent over two hundred days in detention, and incurred over two hundred thousand dollars in costs. But then breaking that down by of those costs, how much was spent on services?
Six thousand eight hundred and four was the actual rehabilitative services. It was that larger compared with residential placement, one hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-two. So trying to kind of suss out, not just like what's the overall cost of the juvenile justice case, but really how effectively are we using that money in matching whatever that child's particular risk or need is to something that's gonna turn things around as opposed to the more administrative or placements holding costs, which tend to be more expensive.
Right in line with like some of the efforts DCY is doing to look at some of the youth right there with release orders who may be sitting there for weeks and weeks, even though they do have, you know, waiting for an evaluation or replacement. How can we better move the youth along without giving up due process? So that they're not just waiting for services for the bulk of time and they're aging out before we really get to the issue. And so that's, that's what we've come up with. Like we said, we can kind of go through the different system points, so.
However, this will be most helpful for you today, given that I don't know if we've already overrun the meeting time.
No.
Right.
Our big, and we, again, we hope to present this, you know, we wanted to give you kind of a sneak peek, have you have a chance to think through some of it and be ready to ask those questions when we do more formally release it in a couple of weeks. But, but for us, the big takeaways are, you know, obviously, everyone in this room I know believes that children are worth the investment, right? So we're willing to spend money on our young people. We need to spend money on our young people. That is gonna be what's best for Omaha in the long run, and Douglas County in the long run. But what are the most effective ways we can spend that money, like to make targeted investments and doing that right? I think we, that's been a long reform, as we've heard, over ten years, and we need to continue down that path. So some of our big, the recommendations from going through this process are obviously avoid net widening. You get the most bang for your buck in juvenile justice if you are focusing those dollars on the kids who present the greatest risks and needs. Many kids will simply age out of teenage misbehavior if you don't even catch them, so.
I did.
The system itself can do harm in addition to being expensive. So obviously, we want to just screen away as many of those very low-risk kids as we can. If we could eliminate racial and ethnic disparities and disproportionality in our system, we almost wouldn't have a juvenile justice system in Omaha, Douglas County. It is, that is absolutely the work of improving our justice system. Implementing a timely response, like Christine was saying, if we can get to the solution faster so the kids aren't waiting, that connects whatever their behaviors are to the accountability, which is, we know from the teenage brain, it's a really important feedback mechanism for them. And it's also gonna be saving us money in the end. And then finally, relevantly to the conversation before, we just have to further expand our alternatives to detention because we know that our kids can be kept safely in communities, other communities of similar size and demographic to Omaha around the country have a substantially lower rate of detention for their youth. So we know that this is a place that would be good for kids and it would be good for their bottom line. Anything else?
No, and I know since we are kind of over time too, but.
No, you're good, we, we budgeted it was gonna be long, so.
Oh, okay.
But you got a question.
You have not ruled this out yet?
No, we haven't.
I did, I, we, we thought we were just coming to give you kind of a sneak peek today.
Yeah.
We didn't realize the room would be so full. So my, my office did put it up online today. We're still planning to do a formal release, with the press release and everything, on the 26th. And hopefully be able to.
And how would we find it online?
Let me give you.
So when, so you'll be ready for primetime at the end of the month?
Right.
Okay.
It is avail, it is available online right now. Let me pull up the, they put it up in a blog post for me today. It's voicesforchildren.com. Slash. The Cost of Juvenile Justice: A Case Scenario Study and Their Spans between each word. What I'll do, hang on, let me pull up.
One question.
Yeah.
The probation youth that was discharged on the first page, were they actually discharged or were some of them aged out?
Or. Oh, there were two percent, it says other, so there was sixty-eight percent successful and thirty percent, or thirty percent unsuccessful, and then two percent other. So some of those successibles or unsuccessful's might also be an age out. But we believe that that two percent other is almost certainly age out, at least, so at least two percent.
And we got that, those numbers from the Voices for, for the juvenile project, through the court system as well, so.
So Juliette, so the 26th, you're gonna have it ready. Are you doing a press conference, or do you wanna put it on the, we can put it on the board agenda and have it more public to it then?
That would be wonderful. If, if we could get on the board agenda, we'll do, maybe we can.
So the 26th is the day?
Briefing and, because that's, is that juvenile justice day with the county board anyway?
That'd be perfect.
Yeah.
So we can do that.
A morning breakfast and then your presentation.
Put it down.
How long are your presentation last, if you don't mind me asking, approximately?
However long you'd like it to. It could be as short as this, but a little more.
Fifteen in questions.
I mean, if you need more, tell us, this is important to listen to. But it'd be good to just have an idea of what it might be, so others know too.
Yeah, I'd say fifteen.
But we don't wanna rush you. Anything between three and five minutes.
Yeah. Maybe if we wanted to like, you know, do more specific steps along the cases, I mean, that would, that would be more like twenty, but.
But we hope that this will be a tool that interested parties can play with, you know, and can look through. We took all of our data from, you know, the Douglas County salaries, as well as the probation contract service costs. So it's publicly available data that we relied on to try to get at some of our costs. We hope that people can, can go through and play with those dot points along the way and see how it all really stacks up.
How are Hispanics represented?
That's a great question. So we didn't do anything in the meat of it, this is sort of your average case. We didn't obviously base that on particular race or ethnicity, but on that front page, where we did some of the annual statistics.
I think so.
As we are aware, currently, the arrest numbers that you can get from the Crime Commission, ethnicity is not reported, so that first bar does not include Hispanic as a category. They are going to be changing that within a couple of years. Our arrest data will have both race and ethnicity reported. But then, when you go to the detention numbers, those are numbers that Voices for Children received from DCYC. And so that's a boost on your count.
Ajmal, Mary.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, how does this relate to your kids count, one? And the two are notice your data is 2015 to 17, why not more timely data? And then the last one is, there's a lot of implications in this report that shows some serious deficiencies and issues. Do you have any more detailed drill down that help us get from everybody from the bottom to the top?
Sure, so. So we're gonna need it now.
Right.
So, yeah, thank you, thank you, Ajmal. It related, this is not necessarily related to kids count. We did take a couple, so my organization, Voices for Children, puts out an annual data book where we get publicly available, as well as some data that we request from agencies and publish it related to child well-being, that's kids count. We did just release our most recent one. So a couple of the data points on here were taken from the most recent kids count at the time that we were putting this together and getting it to the publisher.
Mostly 2017 data, with the exception of some of the diversion data, which we didn't have except for the UNO's diversion report that Juvenile Justice Institute had done. So that was the only one that was the twenty-fif, twenty-twelve.
So honestly, with the data, it's always a timing issue. It's 2019 right now, but to do an annual data, you know, for all of the year 2018, some agencies that our organization requested from, they don't have that to us yet. So that's why our, the data's usually unfortunately backdated at least a year. And then as Christine noted, the one, the diversion information was taken from UNO's, Juvenile Justice Institute did a three-year evaluation of all the diversion programs in the state. So we took that data point from, from theirs, which was even more backdated.
Maria.
Hi, Congress.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, hold on. I'll get you a copy. Go there, go there, Congress.
Okay. I have a question about prevention. I mean, we started step one here, can you tell me where I can look for resources that are doing prevention work before the kids come into the system?
That's a really great question. So there are, there are plenty of organizations in our county that are doing really important prevention work. Some of that is funded by the community-based Juvenile Services Aid Fund, the state grant program that Douglas County gets funding for prevention.
I would say, I would say the early prevention piece is likely to come out of school format. So I would say go ask the goals program what services they have on record. Now, just because they got them on record doesn't mean that's all of them. So you would have to chase it, chase it around a little bit. The places I would suggest to ask are, you know, actually, in a way, who they may find, that would pick you up some. And then I would just get an idea from the Crime Commission, what they find, and then that'll give you an idea of what's there too. Those are the most immediate ones, but it's not gonna even get you close to finding out what's there because there's a whole lot of other people underneath doing stuff.
And a lot of like the community-based initiatives that, you know, are coming up around juvenile justice reform as well are aiming to serve youth across the spectrum, right? You don't wanna have a situation where you have to have a juvenile court case to access a service, right? That would be, you know, against everything that we want to happen. We wanna avoid the system involvement. So a lot of these community-based organizations are doing, you know, spectrum of services.
Maria.
No.
Okay. So, so what's your end goal is trying to do with, I mean, I can see it, but I'm just curious your, what are you trying to, what curve are you trying to have this being in the long term?
We, we are at, at least I'll speak for my organization, are an organization that wants the state, wants the county to invest in kids. So the angle is not for us. We're spending too much money on juvenile justice because we could spend all the money on juvenile justice at my organization, but, but, but how are we that? And are we targeting it to the right moment, the right intervention for that kid to ensure that they don't go farther down along this path where it gets messy and it gets ugly and it goes out of state, the child goes out of state? You know, so, so the end game is not to ask you to, you know, put out in the news, we're spending way too much money on our kids, but rather like what's the most effective use of this money? And how can we get it in there, into the individual case more speedily, even more effectively than we already are getting rid of those cases that really don't belong in the system at all and are clogging up the works for the kids who really need that higher level of intervention?
So kind of a paradigm shift, right? Like addressing a lot of these cases in, within the school setting, restorative justice programs there to avoid formal system involvement, expansion of diversion. So then really, the cases that we need to be dealing with in juvenile court that we have the time and the resources to really work with those youth to have positive outcomes. Because it is, it's, the court system is very clogged right now. You're waiting a lot on the plane to see a thread.
And the other thing I, I wanna highlight on this too is, so we've, on the interactive one, you can hover over each dot to see what's happening in that moment and what the cost breakdown is. But if you, over here, if you hover over just generally the categories of ways we're spending the money, we've broken it down that way. And then on each one, you can see how much is being spent for that category in each of the three different scenarios to be able to compare, kind of as I was doing before, services. Here's where we included things like, you know, treatment, like family support, like, you know, wraparound therapy for the family, intensive outpatient counseling, all that kind of stuff. That actually ended up being one of the, you know, not the highest price tag of everything we're spending our money on. And that's the, that's the magic sauce, right? That helps kids turn their lives around.
Sean.
I may be missing that a little bit because there's lots of writing. This is fantastic, this is a great tool. I think it'll be really useful for all of us at the different points to use. I'm curious about the child welfare system, and we have lots and lots of kids who would be considered dual status or crossover. Who are involved in both systems and our juvenile court handles.
Definitely.
All of that. We're working on efficiencies there. Are those services included in this as well? Are those costs regarding the child welfare end that are more family-based, are those included in here?
No. So all of these ones, they're, they're entry point with through law violation.
Okay.
So none of them were the crossover use. But, but again, kind of going to like the preventative services to what we see coming, coming again, the kids from the child welfare system, those look very different than the kids from our juvenile justice system and really trying to have a spectrum of just services that'll serve kids, not just based on what silos they're in. And just a little bit, you know, this third one, you know, it was a shoplifting and ended up going in a DCYC and it just, I've, I've had cases like that. And then on data that DCYC has presented too, I think through September 2018, there were at least nineteen youth who were admitted on a new violation that was a theft on lawful taking. We do have youth there who are, you know, in the Detention Center for Nonviolent Crimes, a large number of probation violations, which are not even a new law violation, but also a large number of per nonviolent offenses such as a theft.
And our hope is that some of this may be outdated by next summer, so use this while you can. Because, so the blue lines down here, if you can't see, you know, it's a little small, the blue lines represent time spent in detention. And so this, this third scenario down here, there's a pretty long time begun for spending a detention on a probation violation, waiting for evaluation, waiting for placement. And with the rollout of the law in the summer, that law is going to fundamentally shift how detention is used in our state and really preserve secure confinement to kids who present a danger to the community or a risk of like to avoid court. So the reasons an adult could be put in jail. No longer allowing for the incarceration of minors if they only present, you know, a technical violation of their probation or, you know, they aren't a risk. They're just waiting, they're waiting for kind of whatever the next step in their, in their case is.
Great, come on.
So having worked with a lot of youth that go through this process, it's actually kind of fitting that this is upside down because what a lot of the world is.
Keep it that way.
But I'll say two things that might be telling, if you can add to the narrative, is the. But I'll say two things that might be telling if you can add to the narrative is the occurrence for each scenario in terms of percentages for A, B, and C. And then also a comparative analysis of demographics for each of those.
Thanks. Yeah. Like, like Christine said, none of these represents a particular case. These are not real kids, but they do reflect very typical cases that we've seen over and over again and other lawyers have seen. And I think.
Well, and going back to the front page, I mean, the average length of probation is a year, right? So that's the average. So obviously you're having, you're planning to be longer.
And I would not be at all surprised based on all the numbers we have regarding race and ethnicity, if you saw a really disproportionate breakdown in terms of the kids who are more likely to be detained, more likely to be in out-of-home placement, potentially even more likely to go out of state.
Or be placed on probation.
Be placed on probation, right? Would be kids of high.
Or status offenders.
Yeah. Yeah, that's another one of the things. Fifty-three percent of the youth on probation scored at low to moderate, moderate risk. So.
One to nine. PJ.
No. What you're doing should definitely reduce the number of youth being detained. I mean, some of the things you're talking about here.
Absolutely. I mean, that's the direction we've been heading. Every year, as has already been noted by Commissioner Rogers, every year, you know, our detention numbers are going down. And that has been collaborative work among a lot of people in the community. And we absolutely anticipate that continuing to be the case as we start to spend a little less money here and here and a little more money here a little bit sooner.
So Julia, let me ask you, are you all planning to monitor the, the law? The law change in July? Are you all gonna get in that game?
What do you mean by monitor?
Well, there's debate about, you know, how it'll be used. And yeah, I figure it's gonna take a month to get people used, but, you know, like everything, there's a, there's a way you can get through it. I'm just curious, are you all gonna play in that game?
Absolutely. I mean, we've supported that bill. It's best practice. We, we've supported other reforms in the past that had set updates and there, I remember there being really great concern that things would be terrible when the law rolled out. And then the system has accommodated and the system has figured it out. And so I absolutely believe, because everybody in the room wants to do the best thing for the kids.
Well, no, that's the point that I think needs to be screamed at. No, no change in this has happened, oh, I'll get you, I mean, no change in this has happened like, okay, let's get everything in order and make it go. The system has been kind of squeezed, people have adjusted, and we've worked our way through it to meet what's best. And that's gonna be the same thing with this. Okay, then I got hands coming everywhere. Okay, sorry. Ma'am, boom, boom.
First of all, I came in late, so I apologize for missing out on some of this. However, I've been following this for about a year now. And I just applaud the fact that there's so much of a spotlight on the needs to reform the juvenile justice system. And it is a process. And I hear, from what I heard just here, it does address the concerns that came forth in the Chin Report, the things that needed to be done for inadequate needs assessment and the adequate involvement of the community and agencies like yours. I have a question, and it is a question that has been present in my mind since I first came. And that is, it, it really relates to what you're saying about putting the money where it will be the most good for kids and get a system in place that is reputable, that will work, that's systemic, that is really focused on results. And so my question is, and because we have a lot of representation here, why there is this insistence to rush to an unsubstantiated building solution that addresses complex issues related to juvenile justice reform before this work is done? And that, I think, is a very serious question because as a parent, a grandparent, an educator, and a taxpayer, I'm interested in this process going forward in a prudent way. Now, I visited the detention center we have and Mark LaFleur was there and we, I went in with someone else who has attended these meetings. And they were so gracious to show us every aspect of what they're doing, the things they're doing with education. And they're working within the parameters of a system that needs fixed. But what they're doing is to be applauded and to a good spotlight shined on what they're trying to accomplish in the facility they have that needs some, some work and possibly a new facility at some point, who knows? But why do put the cart before the horse and focus on a building that's going to cost taxpayers a tremendous amount of money without any substantiated evidence that that piece of the solution, this multifaceted problem that needs a real spotlight and time to develop good plans like yours?
Okay, so I'm gonna try to answer this short. You're saying, let me, let me start by saying, they, they run a great ship. But there's a debate on this question of, they run a great ship for the kids that need to be in there, they'll continue to run that ship right over there. But the question is, there's a good amount of kids that don't need to be there. Now, you people, there's some people that have argument with this, but this is my argument. More data shows that a kid that's, doesn't need to be in there, that's in there getting those services, has a chance of coming worse. Now, some people have asked, well, show me the data that shows why it is worse for a kid to be in there. It should be harder for a kid to get in than to get out. And from that respect, they'll, they'll continue to do that. Why you need the building is, as was stated before earlier, is that, one, I think it's best practice all in one. Two, you're not putting the building before the court because this programming solution happens in July. This building, you don't have to put a brick down in July, we gotta handle this. So you have the program piece first, and the program piece will go into effect and you'll have to continually adjust it. If this building does happen, happen, it'll be three years later. And everything they talked about underlying that, from the traumatic effects of it to trauma-informed to the programming, you can't talk about the building not being a part of the program. And so in the long term, it's cost-effective with a lesser piece because $300 a day for that kid being in there, if those numbers are less, you save some substantial money. And in the long run, it gets us where you want to get here. Now, that's just my example, that's my explanation of it. We've had this explanation a couple of times. You may not agree, but the fact is, I just want to reiterate, the build is not coming before the program. Programming has to happen in July and the program will be an ever-evolving fact after this building is one-year-old, two-year-old, three-year-old, programming is gonna have to continue to happen. So, you know, I think we're on the same page in respects to the program and where it goes. But I can assure you, there's nothing being rushed.
I'm agreed that we're all on board with the program going forward with assessments and working to get systems in place. But from the first meeting, architectural designs and plans to move to the building stage were in place. This has been something that's altered due to a small group of people who have continued to come and say, this is not about not wanting services and improvements to the system for juvenile justice.
And I'm respectfully disagree and leave it.
Ma'am, could you please state your name for the record?
Sharon Martin.
Thank you.
Maria.
This has been, as Commissioner Rogers said, really an ongoing process. I mean, I, I've been here and introduced up here. Along with there were 200 kids a day in the youth center. The average was about 181 kids a day in the center. And when we focused on juvenile detention alternatives, we were able to get those numbers down. And to go along though, there's changes in law. One of the changes that's harmed our numbers about juvenile charges versus the built system is targeted with the show at our youth center. So as we continue to look at the, the programming piece, the services piece, the evaluation piece, the reform piece in general, is a process that has been gone on for the entire time I've been on this board and it will go on long after I'm gone because that's what happens with reform. My thing is I hope that we had, and I, I spent some time with the parents and, and one of the key takeaways from that, parents of kids who are in the youth center currently, is that, one, that they're listened to at a way earlier stage than what they have been listened to, that their calls and cries for help don't go unanswered or unaddressed. There's a large component of mental health and substance abuse and behavior disorders that we have started to already address. But again, it shouldn't be that an act of violence has to occur before someone gets help for their mental illness or their behavior disorder. So again, we, we also see new things that occur as we're doing this reform that we have to adjust to. But it's an ongoing process and I think focusing how we are on those programs to beat that goal of reducing the number of beds is a good thing. Commissioner Rogers says all the time, and I agree, build it and they will come. Well, you know, if we build the services and the programs, they won't. If we don't have the number of beds unnecessarily high, they won't. And again, it's all for the kids and the families and serving them in a place other than in a detention center, out in the communities or hopefully within their home environment. And that we include and we let the parents participate and be a part of that child's walk through the system and hopefully keep a model of the system.
Did you have any other?
I think I'm okay as far as what happens, but that change in the law should definitely reduce the numbers without question. Brad, do you have any comments about, I mean, you have the greater knowledge than me, so you can correct what I say.
We've requested an opinion from the county attorney's office, which is specifically what our responsibility is when a kid's sitting there and they're waiting for a placement. What are we supposed to do? It's going to be probation responsibility to move them.
And the only, the other thing I wanted to say on the, spending this money, I know because I get some of the emails and calls where they say you're spending $120 million on a jail. Well, first of all, it's about, the Hall of Justice is at least $95 million of that most likely, 90 to 95 million. And that's been stated. And I could add something else if you don't mind. The other thing that was said, you know, vote of the people. We have to build that Hall of Justice no matter what. And if somebody says different, I respect that and wanted to say it. Now, all seven commissioners have said that. I have a strong feeling that if I ask the people to vote, and this has always been my policy, if we ask you to vote and you vote against it, we're gonna be out leasing property that'll cost more to change it, to secure for the judges and all those offices that have the necessary requirement for that tower that we're talking about. And I'm only talking about the tower right now. Once people vote, I don't care what we do, if they voted down, that's the end. I'm not doing it and I'll be a no vote and I'll tell the rest of the commissioners, that's where I'd be. And then we are gonna spend more money than we would otherwise. And that's what's important to know about this whole thing.
And I think for the, for the court needs and everything, I have not heard any objection to any of that. The, the thing is to move forward with reducing, with going on assumptions of what might happen when it can lead to a number of repercussions that would not be in the best interest of kids?
Well, ma'am, there's nothing based on assumption.
Oh, yes, there is.
No, there's not.
Well, okay.
What's based on assumption?
There's a lot.
What's, because if you want to say, and I'm gonna just.
We can go straight to reports.
Well, I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm gonna ask you this because if you want to do it offline, we're fine because I can assure you, there's nothing based off assumption.
Okay. Well, okay, it's field of dreams.
And we can know, we can talk through it afterwards.
If we build it, they will come. Field of dreams approach.
Not programs in that respect. Sir.
I like that conversation that Kevin regarded downtown resident about how the money is being spent not just for the jail. So I can appreciate that concept, but we have only talked about the 120 million of construction project costs that's stated. What do these programs cost us and how do we set that up to make sure we're there?
The program, I'll let you, the program piece, separate the, separate the project and the program because the programming is now. This, the programming happens in July based on, on state law. So the programming piece that happens now, there's, there's three of them, two in the works. First program was presented before the board in August. It's a project that will be on the board agenda next week to give approval to partnership with UNMC, Craden, and Charles Drew to get at the situation of evals and hopefully at the management piece that everybody's worked through to that degree. There's been another meeting happening and we got a time limit because there's another committee meeting, so I'm gonna answer your question and let Maria respond. There's another program that at some point will be on the board, they'll finalize it. It starts in March with Child Savings Institute to address a certain amount of kids that sit there waiting for services, things when they can send a CHI and make that through. The next need through the data is conversations about tickle shelter bids and Unihol is in the process of working that out for girls. And they're having conversations with an entity, I don't want to go yet because specific for the shelter piece for the boys. Everybody's been asking, well, show us the programs first, and this is my rationale. You're not just pulling programs off the shelf. I think it's safe to say you go on the number that are in there with their need and you develop around that. That goes on the shelf ready to use, but if the whole makeup changes to some degree, you're gonna have to have the programs there. So you're developing the half and they'll keep developing from there.
Can I, can I add one thing to it that I think hasn't been mentioned today too? Which is it's not just service and program, but it's also practice. So when you, this is not to say one way or the other about the building itself or whatever the plan is, but we, we, we need to have more programs, we need to have more services that we can invest in, but we can also make some simple changes in our practice.
Yeah.
Of how we respond to kids at different moments in their case.
Yeah.
The kid who runs from placement the first time, does that kid really need to go straight to detention? Or was that kid just blown off duty? And we should give him a second chance in some other way? Or even maybe back at home if he's ready for it? We don't always have to go to the next most criminalized stabbing.
And Julia says we're on the clock.
Well, I just wanted to say for me, the three goals that I have said in the day one on this is, one, to keep children from being caught in the system because it's way harder to get them out once they give in. Once they do give in, that we get them out as absolutely as expedient as possible with the programs or services that they would be given. And then three, when they get, they do have to stay for a period of time, but they do leave, that we give the services and programs in place and we can wrap around them so that they do not come back through that door again. So those, those in and of itself are my three goals that I want to be working towards.
I'd like this for you because you don't have time.
So if you got questions, I'll be out in the hall to answer them, but we gotta get the room up for the audit committee meeting at three.